February 17th is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everybody here and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted and required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Ms. Houston, are there any students sign up for student testimony?
There's not.
None.
No.
Okay. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
We do, we have ten.
Okay.
And our first two speakers are Beth Shields and Brian Unflatt.
So if we have a student that would like to come up, we'll start with a student. Welcome. Go ahead and state your name.
My name is Zoe Jacobs. I am a seventh grader Spanish immersion student at West Sylvan. My little sister is a third grade Spanish immersion student at Ainsworth. I was at Ainsworth for six years. Throughout my time there, we did many activities with the English side. We ate lunch and had recess, did zamba, the Portland play, biz town, the art, science, and book fairs, bookeroo, and formed friendships together. Having the English and Spanish sides together has given us all the opportunity to learn more about different cultures. I think Spanish immersion should stay where it has been for thirty years at Ainsworth. Thank you for thinking of a different and better way to solve the overcrowding in the West Side.
Thank you.
Nice job, Julie.
Welcome, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
When I secured this position to speak before the board, D-Brack had just revealed scenario two A, and I obviously felt a strong need to speak up for my neighborhood and for children being kept at schools whose geography, topography, and proximity defined their belonging. I feel like this message was heard, and I would like to thank D-Brack and the board members for your countless hours and careful consideration. I have had three children go through the community side at Ainsworth. To date, that puts me at ten years at the school. For the record, I never applied to immersion program for any of my children. Over the last weeks, I have watched things play out while remaining relatively quiet. I stood up for my community and the right for neighborhood kids to have access to their neighborhood schools and then took a seat. But I feel compelled to speak out now as over the last several days, I've witnessed immersion parents actively petitioning on and now around school grounds, soliciting signatures from parents and children to support their stay at the school. And my intention is not to push anyone out. But a letter has been sent out attached to this petition stating Ainsworth is one school. Ainsworth SI is not a separate program. And part of this is accurate. Ainsworth is one school, and I understand that families and kids believe in an equal belonging to the school. But these are two very different programs housed within its walls. This is just simple fact. In first grade, my son was in a classroom of thirty-six kids at the start of the year, one teacher, no aide. In an effort to manage the class size, the teacher began farming kids out, holding conferences with parents on the twelfth day of school. One got put back, one got moved up, one got moved into Spanish immersion. Every day, there were kids in the hallways crying. The experience was miserable. Parents were told by the principal and foundation that there was no money for an aide, that it would be illegal to use foundation funds for a TA in the classroom. If we wanted an aide, we as parents would have to come up with the money ourselves. It was a lost year for my son. He has been diagnosed with an anxiety disorder that makes it difficult to speak up in a classroom, especially one where the teacher is at her wits' end and kids are packed in like sardines. Meanwhile, down the hallway, Spanish immersion has classes capped and has an aide and even an intern in the room sometimes. Two years later, it was revealed that aides within the school should have been allocated evenly between the two programs. I don't know how to speak to this, and to the best of my knowledge, while attention was called to the problem, it was not remedied. In our team at Ainsworth, my children have been in blended classrooms with thirty-four to thirty-eight kids, sometimes more. Even the best teachers have been overwhelmed and struggled to teach appropriate curriculum. Meanwhile, SI has capped classrooms and aides. Inequities and conflicts come into play when funding for resources and specialists for both programs are pulled from one foundation pot. The nature of the Spanish immersion program simply demands more from our school and community often gets left with the short end of the stick, and I know this is not immersion's fault. Ainsworth has run headfirst into the obvious problem of a focus option program being co-located in public schools. As our populations grow and the community classrooms absorb these large numbers, this is an issue that will come up time and again. For Ainsworth, regardless of what happens or how the chips fall, I think this is an opportunity to look at ourselves as a community and address these conflicts with great humility, optimism, and perspective, and find a way to make ourselves better whether we remain in one building or somebody moves. This is an opportunity to look at how immersion programs function in the PPS system and perhaps change the model so they serve the whole school, teaching according to skill and fluency rather than at grade level. The immersion program is a wonderful program with many strong and wonderful people who contribute to its success, and I really feel it is right in celebrating itself. But I have to stand up and say that this shouldn't happen at the expense of neighborhood kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Unflatt, and I'm a parent in the Southwest School District. I have three children that go to Riki, that go to Robert Gray, and will be going to Wilson. So I have three in September in each of those three schools. Tonight, I want to share my thoughts of many, but not all, of our Southwest community regarding the implications proposed by the D-Brack boundary shifts. The past several months have left lasting positive and some negative impressions. There have been mentions of exclusivity, segregation, and intent of focus programs. The latter was not developed to segregate, it was established to integrate. However, some have recently implied that segregation is a byproduct of this proposal. We respectfully disagree. Our schools aren't successful because of where they are located. They are successful because of what their unique communities, students, and employees put into them. We hope that those currently contributing to their school's success will remain committed regardless of movement now or in the future. We all support the success of focus programs, but not if they take precedence over accessibility to community schools. Let's not confuse the difference between focus programs and special need programs. The growth of one is a nice-to-have, the preservation of the other is a must-have. The current two B proposal was developed via community crowdsourcing, hours of meetings, and hundreds of constructive recommendations. It was not the result of backroom deals, secret meetings, and implied favoritism. But somewhere along the way, it has divided communities, threatened relationships, and impeded progress towards a much bigger picture. I want to encourage all of us to evaluate the root cause of these necessary boundary changes and realize that it isn't the fault of our schools or the communities who attend them. It is a result of our city's growing pains, lack of resources to plan for long-term infrastructure, and not learning from our past. I hope we all recognize that change isn't coming, it is here, and more will be on the way if we don't focus on a united front rather than our disparate ways. Thanks to all who continue to conduct themselves with decorum during this period of change, we will continue to support being conduit with Portland Planning, Transportation, and Urban Growth Organizations to get bond measures passed to help solve our underlying growth issues for the long term, keeping Portland the amazing city we all call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Hanson and Holly Ingram.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hanson, with an E, not a O. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight about the boundary change proposals. I am a mother to a rambunctious kindergartner at Ainsworth, and our family has been a part of the Homestead OHSCU neighborhood for the past eighteen years. Although with a kindergartner, we are a new family to the Ainsworth Elementary Community. My daughter is a part of the community program. Our Homestead neighborhood strongly supports keeping children at their local schools. We were horrified at the domino effect that was on the table when proposal two A was considered, as it would have driven our neighborhood as well as Council Crest and Green Hills neighborhoods out of our local school to other schools that were marked much harder to reach. The effect of transferring children into new schools with feeder patterns is incredibly disruptive to students, particularly those during transitions. I know this firsthand from watching my own daughter get switched from one kindergarten class to another after the first week of school. We were informed of the change on Friday, allowing us the weekend to prepare Allison for this change. Even though she had only five days of school under her belt at Ainsworth, we were wrong to think how easy this transition would be. Many tears were shed that weekend, and it took a long period of transition to get Allison back to where she felt secure in her classroom and could look towards the future at school with certainty. Seeing how the Ainsworth community was originally affected by proposal two A, this brought back memories of our kindergarten transition. Luckily for Allison, D-Brack realized the importance of keeping neighborhood communities together, and as a result, proposal two B was created. Unfortunately, other kids were now in a similar situation to ours. We believe that the top priority for these boundary proposals should be to keep school communities together intact as much as possible. The Ainsworth community was particularly harshly affected by proposal two A. Transportation was a major issue for our community with that proposal, as kids from Council Crest and Green Hills would have to be transferred from a walkable school to a difficult-to-reach Riki. Homestead, which contains OHSCU as well as three other major hospital systems, is often massively congested with hospital commuter traffic, and the route straight up the hill to Ainsworth and Lincoln is the only direction from Homestead that remains uncongested at these times. The Homestead neighborhood is an often overlooked area that comprises Ainsworth's largest community neighborhood group of minorities, bringing socioeconomic and ethnic diversity to the Ainsworth community. Homestead has the highest percentage of minority residents out of all of Southwest Portland's Ainsworth catchment. Homestead also has the largest proportion of renters, about fifty-nine percent. This is two to three times as much as the rest of Ainsworth's Southwest Portland catchment. My own daughter's community kindergarten class overwhelmingly reflects this. Out of twenty-six students, eight are minorities, seven of whom live in the Homestead neighborhood. Out of these kids, five out of seven live in rentals, and within this group, languages other than English are spoken at home. My time is up, I assume? I will finally conclude. I'm going to skip over some things, but what I just wanted to end with, there are some other things saying that I personally don't approve of proposals two A or two B, but what I want to conclude is that I acknowledge the challenges that you, the school board, face in trying to solve the problem caused by the residential development and subsequent school overcrowding in Northwest Portland, and thank you and D-Brack for your commitment to all the students in Portland. I would like to ask that as you prepare the final boundary change proposal, you abide by the Portland School Board policy that all PPS students have the right to attend their neighborhood school, and take this into account the importance of neighborhoods, school accessibility, and equity that are significant for the Ainsworth school community. Thank you.
Thank you. And those of you that brought written comments like yourself, if you could leave them with Karen, then we'll actually have them and can re-refer to them. So, thank you.
Good evening. Board members, Superintendent Smith, PPS staff, and fellow community members. My name is Holly Ingram, and I'm the president of the PTA at Riki Elementary and a proud PPS employee. I am here tonight in anticipation of your decision you will make about how to redraw district boundaries. While I know Superintendent Smith has not presented you a recommendation, I request that you consider the following framework as you build the proposal around her proposal. First and foremost, leave no school underserved. Our hope is that no school in this process ends up under-enrolled and risks losing services. If this isn't inevitable, please provide a plan of additional funding to maintain programming and services for under-enrolled schools. In current scenario for two B, both Hayhurst and Bridamile are at risk. Ironically, Bridamile and Hayhurst, if they're right-sized, along with Riki, feed into Robert Gray, then they will be overcapacity at Gray. With Wilson also overcapacity, we need to clearly think about enhanced middle school facilities and in the near term and long term. Second, provide continuity for our kids. Kudos for Superintendent Smith soothing parents' fears by announcing her recommendation to include grandfathering. We ask you to enhance this by enabling elementary school students to stay in their current feeder patterns through high school so they can continue to grow with their current cohorts. Third, keep neighborhoods whole. As you consider the new boundaries, please consider our natural neighborhoods and prioritize walkability for students. Students' current walking zones maps provide a thoughtful anchor. If focus school programs must be relocated to support neighborhood growth, let's make sure they have fantastic facilities and support which they'll thrive. And finally, in an appeal to all of you concerned parents as well as friends who have been involved in this process, we are observing a challenging time for Portland public schools. While there is no easy way to address the specific challenges that come with Portland's rapid growth, I'm disheartened to see just how far the reboundering process has driven wedges into our community. Parents are lashing out one another, dividing over speculation and fear. Way too many hours are being spent on social media and at meetings instead of with our kids. My ask is that we all unite and that you as a school board members lead us through this process. Be transparent and inclusive. Shut down the rumor mills, agree to not cut special deals behind doors, and let's work together to make PPS schools great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lori Lockman. I have a fourth grader at Beach School on the neighborhood side, and I am a proud Jefferson Cluster parent. I appreciate the hours and thoughtful deliberations that D-Brack members and staff have put into addressing over and under-enrolled schools and inequitable programming in K eights throughout the district. As you know, the 2012 Jefferson Cluster enrollment balancing resulted in resolution four seven one eight. That closed Oakley Green focus option to create a two-campus K eight with Chief Joe as a K three and Oakley Green as a four eight. It also developed the D-Brack to address enrollment issues in alignment with the racial education equity policy and increase neighborhood school capture rates and balance enrollment throughout the district. Since then, our cluster has been working together to plan the reopening of middle schools, since many of our K eights have consistently failed to provide equitable education opportunities or even the full core program for our middle grade students. We have patiently waited and are prepared to support this change now. D-Brack recommended that Oakley Green open as a middle school in fall of 2016. Representatives throughout our schools in the Jefferson Cluster have vetted these recommendations in a variety of forums and fully support it. I ask that you vote on this recommendation at your February twenty-third board meeting, even if that means uncoupling it from the remaining recommendations. Administrators, staff, and stakeholders believe that Oakley Green can open as a strong and cohesive middle school in fall of 2016 with Beach, Chief Joseph, and Woodlawn as feeders. This configuration solves a series of problems. It relieves acute overcrowding at Beach. The sixth and eighth grade students feeding into Oakley maintain the Jefferson and Roosevelt dual enrollment boundary. It provides critical core and elective programming to more students. It accommodates all currently enrolled students in grade five through seven at Beach, Chief Joe, and Woodlawn, and provides a year planning time to right-size their boundaries as K fives going forward. We have developed a draft transition and implementation plan that addresses staffing models, community building, PBIS, partnership development, transportation, and capital investments. This transition planning needs to start immediately. We have a historic opportunity for PPS in our Jefferson Cluster community to partner together on a shared and positive solution that will immediately increase opportunities for our students over a decade of inequalities or inequities, sorry. We look forward to continuing our engagement with you to open a second middle school in our cluster, the Harriet Tubman Middle School, for the 2017-18 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosie Platt. I'm the PTA president at Chapman. Ever since D-Brack's final recommendation to Carol Smith, the West Side has entered a new stage of division amongst communities, with rumors, private meetings, with no public input or minutes shared. Chapman leaders have not participated or endorsed any ideas coming from these meetings that may be presented to the board. Board members have also participated in these meetings, which of course they encourage to do, in order to educate themselves on the various concerns of West Side families. Rules were developed by D-Brack and approved by the board in October of 2015 that states, "Further proposals developed by any stakeholder, including community members, D-Brack members, district staff, or board members, that impacts communities and not seeking feedback from those impacted communities lies in direct violation of resolution five one four nine." As we move forward, I hope to see communities revert back to this high level of transparency and that the school board continues with the same level as was conducted with the D-Brack meetings, including community feedback from all affected parties in the event that a new scenario is put on the table. Scenario two B does address the overcrowding at Chapman, and we support the proposal with adjustments to help maintain programming at under-enrolled schools and the inclusion of the Willamette Heights neighborhood at Chapman, which is located at the farthest northwest corner of our catchment. I have heard that moving portions of Chapman to the east side, Irvington and Boise Elliott, are potential parts of new scenarios created by community members. Moving Chapman to the east side affects bridge traffic, loss of walkability in an area where many inner-city families really do walk and many do not own cars. Also, being aware of relocating the most vulnerable students as homeless shelters and most of Chapman's affordable family housing units would be potentially affected. Finally, the east side is experiencing enormous growth as well, and their boundary issues have not been addressed. There are a lot of variables and data that would need to be thoroughly evaluated first. It is hard to imagine that busing Chapman neighborhood children to the east side would be considered over relocating a non-neighborhood program that is in the heart of the Northwest, the area with the largest projected growth. It was brought up back in November that eighty-five percent of MLC students are from the east side. It seems like this should still be on the table for consideration when the ripple effect throughout the west side due to Chapman's overcrowding will potentially negatively affect many neighborhood schools. PPS stated two reasons not to locate an MLC and convert the Cooch Building into a neighborhood school. One, that there are not enough students to support two Northwest schools. Chapman and the Cooch Building, however, a significant flaw of two B is creating similar problems with Bridamile and Hayhurst under-enrolled, and the growth of the Pearl isn't slowing down. Two, I understand that the community is the classroom for MLC students, and an urban environment is needed for their curriculum, but there are other urban areas with vacant schools within the city, a short bus ride away from downtown. This entire process has illuminated the inequalities of schools and programs throughout the city. As the boundary process enters this next phase, PPS needs to focus on equity. All students should have equal access to everything from languages to small class sizes to specials, regardless of the building size or school population after this boundary change. My final request is that the commitment to transparency and community involvement continues throughout this next process. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Avideo Garcia and Jeannie Savage.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Avideo Garcia. I'm my children in the Spanish immersion program. Let me start with a few facts about our program. Eighty percent of the Ainsworth historical and deserved population is part of the Spanish immersion. Historically undeserved is currently twenty-five percent of the immersion program, and thanks to the lottery changes, is on track to be above thirty percent by 2017. Our community contains families from at least thirteen different countries, including Mexico, Argentina, Chile, Spain, Cuba, Bolivia, Colombia, and El Salvador. We value our diversity and it's a critical part of the program and the character of the school. Historical undeserved population is only six point six in the English program, and the immersion program is a key component of providing that diversity at Ainsworth. I was troubled that none of the evaluation criteria made in by the PPS racial equity lens were addressed by the D-Brack two B proposal. Perhaps that was because there was only forty-eight hours to evaluate the proposal before voting, and at that time, there was zero focus outreach to the historical undeserved community and native speakers impacted, in direct violation of the PPA's racial education and equity policy, section F. We survey our community, and ninety-three percent oppose two B. Ninety-two percent says East Sylvan will be more difficult to access. Ninety-five percent believe this will impact their children in an negative way. The board has said focus options, and quote, "actively seek to create a sense of community with which racial, economic, and cultural isolation are reduced." A proposal that isolates eighty percent of the historical undeserved population into a separate facility is difficult to reconcile with those values. This program has thirty years of success with diverse populations of children that are thriving and integrated in this school. Why are we putting all this at risk? I often get the question, "Well then, what is your proposal?" Private citizens can propose ideas, but it's a belief of my community that those solutions must be fairly and transparently vetted and not a process that should be led by private citizens. How can we advocate for something that hasn't been assessed with fairness? My community is reluctant to risk perpetrating the very injustice that has been forced on us. While PPS takes the time to create long-term solutions, I believe there are better short-term options based on current under enrollment in surrounding schools, and over enrollment in Chapman can be fully absorbed by the boundary in West Side schools without exceeding a class of twenty-eight, just like the Spanish immersion classes at Ainsworth. Why not reduce the overcrowding in Hayhurst and Otisie in the 2016 estate within a year? Why leave Bridamile and Ainsworth with such an under enrollment while the Spanish immersion moves out? There was enough West Side immersion demand last year to support a full four-strewn elementary school in the West Side. So please create a Wilson Cluster immersion option, taking pressure off Lincoln in the future. If we want to respect grandfathering, compelling voluntary options are the fastest way to drive change. Why wouldn't this be the first things we consider instead of the last? The scenario two, two A, two B have two things in common. They were massively disrupted and they don't solve the problem. Our data shows that Chapman will be overcrowded within a few years. Solving for that problem in long term should be merged with the ongoing district-wide analysis for 2017 so we can look at the problem holistically. Above all, let's learn from our mistakes with two B. Don't rush. Be transparent with the community. Allow time for real feedback by affected community, principals, and teachers. Be consistent with existing policies, and please don't fall into the trap of believing that devices, social media, performance are representative of a public sentiment. Please look past those loud voices and to understand the overall sentiment that really represents the interest of a whole community. We will certainly value the opportunity to engage with the board members and work through the more viable solutions that two B. I will be remiss if I didn't close by publicly thanking Alice Perry, member of the Latino Network and long dissented D-Brack member to two B, and thank you for your efforts and all your work.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. That's really hard to follow. My name is Jeannie Savage, and I'm from Bridamile, and I have a son in the eighth grade at West Sylvan, and I have two daughters at Bridamile Elementary in second and fourth grade. I'm a family physician, and I deliver babies, and I also work in a community health center serving mostly the Latino population. So I'm here basically for two main points. I'm more nervous now, so excuse me for trembling a bit. First of all, we have thirty-two children at West Sylvan that have been slightly overlooked. We have planned to go to Lincoln since third grade, moving here in our third grade. Our son's best friend lives across the street, and we've been incorporated with the Lincoln brand. These plans have been laid down, and these kids have had expectations. I agree that moving hastily forward with any plan is not a good idea. I've left a handout out there that I would like you to refer to, to kind of go through the reasons why I don't think 2B works, and the reason why many people up here, other reasons that many people have already stated. I do, I just have one thing really to say, and going forward, I think it's important that any plan takes into the highest regard what happens to the children, and I know that seems obvious, but I think it's really important that we don't leave out just those 32, that we look and we see what their lives were like. It's a big transition in adolescents. I know from talking with kids that if you ask them, why they tend to make good decisions is because their friends are with them. If you take 32 and separate them out, you go directly against what you've said you would do, and you make it tough on these kids. My other reason to talk this evening is for the under enrollment issue. I think it's been covered. I think that it's not good to create any plan that takes away from the success of other schools. I agree with change. I think change needs to happen. I don't think anybody in my community is against change, but I think it needs to be done thoughtfully. I think it needs to be done collaboratively, and I think that the energy that has been created by this whole process is amazing. Look at all these people who are out there participating in this community event. That is what I'm thankful for. I'm thankful that my son is up here seeing it, and I'm thankful that you're listening, and please take into account everything that everybody said. Let these kids go through. They deserve it. It's the right thing to do. You'll be following your directives, and you'll feel good about yourselves.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie.
And lastly, we have Naira Perez and Juan.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Naira Perez, and I thank you all for your time and for all your efforts into solving this little puzzle that we have.
Can you speak a little louder, please, and restate your full name?
Yes, yes. Hello, my name is Naira Perez, and thank you so much for all your hard work and for looking at this puzzling topic that we have ahead. I am here to represent Ainsworth Spanish immersion historically undeserved population. Proposal 2B specifically targets this population, which represents 25% of SI currently, the second-largest HU school population on the West Side. In our community, there are parents whose kids are integrated at Ainsworth that have limited access to internet and whose primary language is Spanish. Parents that won't attend your meetings or go to the PPS website to see if PPS has translated documents into Spanish. We feel left out with literally no time to react and be heard. We keep hearing that D-BRAC and PPS knows what is best for us without anybody reaching out to us. So our community did our own survey, and we want to share those results with you. So we may no longer be numbers and statistics, but voices. Ninety-three percent of our community is opposed to 2B. D-BRAC was told from staff that the East Sylvan location may offer better access for native Spanish-speaking students from other parts of the West Side. We are here to tell you that 92% of our community says that that is not true, and that actually it will be more difficult for them to access the program if relocated. We are here to tell you that 95% of our historically undeserved population thinks that proposal 2B is going to affect our kids negatively. Some comments from parents are, "Our son will feel like he was being punished for being of Hispanic descent." Another Spanish-speaking parent said, "My son feels safe at Ainsworth now. We feel scared. We don't know what is going to happen." The negative effects are not just psychological, but educational, too. The historically undeserved population at Ainsworth will need to choose between following the SI program and join and experiment with lots of uncertainties, gambling with the education of their kids, or forego the immersion and attend their neighborhood school where they will fall behind academically, struggling to keep up. There is research that demonstrates both facts. When the superintendent and the board study this proposal, we challenge you to apply the equity lens under the racial educational equity policy, which says, "The district shall create welcoming environments that reflect and support the racial and ethnic diversity of the students, population, and community." I ask you to consider that proposal 2B is actually doing the opposite of this. It is taking us the ethnic diversity out of Ainsworth, separating us from our community, isolating us, or as one of our Latino parents has said, "moving us out of sight." We, the Hispano-Latino, feel like relocating SI out of Ainsworth uproots us from a community where we're integrated. In the words of one parent, "My children will be singled out. They will understand that learning their language will have negative consequences, and it is going back in time when speaking Spanish was something that you shouldn't do so you could fit in. My son will be taught that he doesn't belong." Finally, I ask you, as another parent has asked before, that when you think of the impact of this decision, don't just look at numbers. Think about the parents that are not here, the ones that you didn't hear from, but they are there. We are there at Spanish immersion Ainsworth, Somos Ainsworth. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Juan Gomez. I'm a parent at Ainsworth Spanish immersion, and I am going to read a letter to you from another parent from Spanish immersion at Ainsworth. His name is Jorge Padilla. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight with us. He's working. Also, I just wanted to mention that this letter has been translated from Spanish, as he doesn't speak English. I am that parent that PPS refers to the historically underserved, that population that PPS is working hard in closing the achievement gap. I am that parent whose kids are at Spanish immersion at Ainsworth and that this proposal 2B leaves behind. I am that parent that can't come to the D-BRAC or PPS meetings because they don't even know what that means, because the communication that we receive comes in English. I am that parent that doesn't have a driver's license, the one that doesn't have papers and is afraid to talk. I am that parent that lives far away from Ainsworth, the one that drives an hour to get to the only Spanish immersion program on the West Side. That parent that made the promise to his kids to embrace their heritage and share it with the community. And that community is Ainsworth. I am that hopeful parent that sees his children belong to a community that otherwise they won't have access to. I am that parent that PPS called last year to enroll my kids at Spanish immersion at Ainsworth, because PPS told me that it was a successful program and that it will be the best for my kids. I am that parent that now it's lost in translation, that doesn't understand why we are being marginalized, separated from our community and from a flourishing school. The one that is left behind after all PPS efforts to reach out to us, the one that becomes D-BRAC in PPS numbers and stats. We are there at Spanish immersion at Ainsworth. We just don't have a voice. You won't see us at your meetings. We won't write you letters, and you will try once again to close the achievement gap that you were close to achieve at Spanish immersion at Ainsworth. Please, when you make your decision, think about that parent that is not here tonight, that you didn't hear from. We are there. We are Ainsworth.
Thank you.
And I'm going to just, Chair Curler asked earlier, if you did put your testimony in writing, will you leave it with Karen? Just because I will add it to the back of the proposal I give to the board, all the testimony that was read here tonight, so please leave it so that I can do that.
And...
Thank you.
One of the letters.
Yeah, the letters that you just did. Great.
Okay. And then Carol, I think it'd be good just for you to describe the next process you've now been handed, recommendations.
Okay, so I have now received the recommendations from D-BRAC as of last Tuesday. I will, and part of what I go through now, I have had an implementation team that's been looking at the proposals as they've been formulated by D-BRAC and looking to advise me about what's involved in actually implementing them. So what costs will be involved? What are the staffing implications? What are the curricular and facility implications? And like sequencing, what money we have available to actually make these things happen and do them with integrity? So numbers are things I'm now considering have to do with our ability to implement, because the whole goal behind this was to end up with a better product than we currently have. So like, we're looking at our ability to deliver. I will then go through some listening, but limited, so really looking at the things that were put forward to me by D-BRAC. I will do a listening session on the West Side and one on the East Side. The one on the West Side will be really specifically an invitation and with good translation for Spanish-speaking families, but it's open to the entire West Side. On the East Side, I want to hear more from specifically Jefferson Cluster, so it's open to the entire East Side, but I want to hear Jeff Cluster folks in particular in terms of readiness, because what I'll be trying to weigh is the urgency against what kind of planning and ability to deliver a quality product, given the timing that this decision will ultimately be made. Because I'll make a recommendation to the board. The board then is going to be doing more listening, so it's likely that an actual decision won't happen for a bit and reduces our likelihood of being able to do implementation by fall. So I'm just going to say that's part of what I'm weighing, but I will make recommendations about implementation. I will also go through a process with the board, who have been all out attending many of these listening sessions and as well as listening to people, but I'll meet with each of them individually to hear their thoughts before I do my recommendations, so that I'm really making sure to incorporate whatever they've gleaned and whatever insight, because you've got a whole group of people who've been really actively out listening to voices, and as you know, even by what you hear tonight, they don't all line up in a really simple solution. This is not a really easy one, and we are, as a community, grappling with really significant growth that we've got to figure out how we handle and really honor what we love about our neighborhood schools. So we'll also be doing individual outreach through our dual-language immersion department to the 17 Spanish-speaking families who are in the Ainsworth program, so they can speak to us individually and in their native language. So that, and I will get a report that says to me, here's what those families, so like, really specifically, we'll be doing individual reach-out to be able to hear from families. So, let me see if there's other things that I need to name. And then I put together a proposal that will come to the board in the next couple of weeks, that then it's in their court. They then go through additional listening and wrestling and can tweak or modify based on what they hear. So we've got another couple layers to go through. And I just want to say, the letters that people have written me, just since it's been in my court, have been so incredibly thoughtful and with really, just really trying to put forward here other ways to think about something. Please make sure you notice this, because you may not know this, but just really thoughtful, trying to help move us to positive solutions and in a way that really respects everybody involved. So I just want to really appreciate the voices that have come forward and have really been advocating continued transparency in our process, because I feel like people have really been trying to contribute to how do we land something that really works for our community. So I just want to say thank you for that, and I will include the testimony and the letters in my proposal to the board, so those are all visible to them as well. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Carol.
Can you clarify that what you mentioned, the 17 families?
So, and again, this is coming from a recommendation from my implementation team, is that we've got families that, as you mentioned, are not likely to come and speak necessarily in a large community meeting, but do, that we want to hear from individually. And so our dual-language immersion department has offered to do individual phone calls to families and then give me a report that's saying, here's what we heard. So, and actually, similar to what you just, I think, did.
So there are 17 families that don't speak English? Is that...
You know...
Or 17 Hispanic families?
Seventeen Spanish-speaking families is what I was told. So here's what I'm going to say to you. That may be wrong. That may be wrong. And I'm gathering that it is, so here's what I'll say. I'm relying on them to tell me who it is they're going to call, so let me just leave it at that, and we'll seek more information to make sure we make the right phone calls. But it was individual reach-out rather than depending on who shows up at a community meeting, I think is the main point there, is understanding that we may not be hearing all the voices and during this chapter, doing a personal outreach to make sure that we're hearing from people. So that was really the point of it. Okay?
Is all the West Side not just Spanish immersion, so undeserved?
So, okay, two meetings that I'll do. One is West Side and one is East Side, but I'm doing special invitation to communities that were directly impacted, because I'm going to be basing my recommendations on what I got from D-BRAC, right? So I'm not starting from scratch. I'm taking what they gave me. Communities that have been directly impacted in their recommendation, I want to then hear more from about, okay, what does this mean? What do you do to improve or refine? Like, I want really direct, what does this mean to you? So I'm doing direct reach-out and saying, I need to hear from you, but it's not exclusive. Anybody can come from the West Side to the West Side, or you can come to either listening session or both, but I really directly want to hear from communities that are impacted. Make sense?
Since we're doing like this yellow thing, just one thing from Jefferson Cluster, which is that, one thing to think about, and one thing that we're concerned about, is if you wait, if you wait for us, the implementation district-wide is going to be immense, and so we want to go, we're ready, we're doing the work. Let us meet with you so that we can allay your fears.
And you guys, if you've put together a strategic plan yourself, be sure to...
We did.
Okay, be sure to provide it. And I will say, my implementation team is going to do some, reach out to you directly to do some listening. And it's likely that implementation of this entire thing is not going to be like a one or two-year thing. This is likely to be multiple years, because we're talking multiple buildings, we're talking not a huge, big influx of money, that, I mean, we're talking still the same resources we're working with right now and trying to make a pretty significant transition, and we do not want to do some... Yeah, we want to do this well. We want to do well.
We're ready. We're ready.
Okay. Is that enough?
Yeah, that's, thank you. That was perfect. Go ahead.
I just wanted to publicly thank Chair Curler for opening up more opportunity for public testimony tonight. I think it was really important.
And the other thing I will say is, so Carol just talked about the process, then it comes through the board. Everybody on this board is totally committed to a process where everybody is hurt, so we haven't finalized what that looks like, but I think we're all on the same page that it's, will be exhaustive. So, thank you.
Listening.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, everybody, for all your testimony. All right. Our next topic is the board priorities. On December 1 of 2015, the board voted on its priorities for 215, 16, and 16, 17 school years. Since that time, the board has been working on metrics for those priorities in conjunction with the superintendent and her staff. We're ready to vote on those metrics tonight. The board will now consider Resolution 5210, adopting board priority metrics for 215, 16, 16, 17 school year. Do I have...
You should mention that we did the work mostly at the last meeting that was an open meeting.
Yeah, we've had four open meetings on these, and we've also had various committees. So it's been a lot of, it's actually been a lot of great work, and I think it has us together with Carol and her team focused on what needs to get done. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Director Anthony moves. Director Constan seconds to adopt Resolution 5210. Ms. Houston, is there a public comment?
No.
No. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? We've been discussing quite a bit. Yeah. All right. Let's see if there's any surprises on our vote. The board will now vote on Resolution 5210. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The Resolution 5210 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Student Representative Davis is in voting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, good. Well done, everybody. Yeah. We, now, are going to go into... We now are gonna go into a conference, a board member conference report, so Director Constan, would you like to provide a report on your visits?
Sure. I made, went to New York two weeks ago at the invitation of leadership with the, our teachers' union to visit the consortium schools, which is a group of high schools in New York City that have had a waiver from the New York State Regents from their standardized testing model to do what they refer to as performance-based assessment. And so we had an opportunity to talk with leaders in the school, leaders of the consortium, about how that has worked, how they have, over the years, refined these very detailed rubrics for evaluating student performance. We got to visit a couple of schools and see this assessment model in action, which one of the pieces of that that was really compelling to me was a whole peer review component of it. So students were, each, each performance-based assessment team had the instructor, the instructor of the class that the student was enrolled in, another teacher in the school, and then another student. So the experience was just as, as useful for the other student doing the really thoughtful review of his or her peer as it was for the student who was presenting his or her, her work. And it was, it was really interesting and instructive, and, you know, we will move forward in terms of refining our own best practices in terms of student assessment as a district, so it was very useful.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Thomas? No? Okay. The business consent, the board will now consider the remainder of the business agenda. Already have voted on five two one zero. Board members, are there any other items you'd like to pull before we go on?
Is that your pardon?
Do you want to pull any items before we vote on the consent? Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Anthony moves, and Director Sparza Brown seconds to the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. The board will now vote on the agenda. All in favor, please by, indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Voting yes. Okay, the next meeting of the board will be held Tuesday, February twenty-third, and this meeting is adjourned.